Turn around and clo- you know, cover your mouth for God's sake. You're gonna cough. I won't say what gender and age group that was, but still, come on.
Well, I'm guessing by your tone, it must have been a man. What do you think, Matt? You don't have to go out on the end of the line with me.
That's the great turn you give.
Back to probably you, man.
Actually, I'm giving you guys credit because you were actually taught better, that you were taught at a young age to cover. So I'm gonna go on the other spectrum. You know, because they just.
Yeah. Probably I'll get your nine one ones.
Yeah. Remember the branch, even when these people in Congress.
Well, most of them, they will do the elbow, so they don't touch your hand. You know, it's just as bad as. Somebody's.
I'm good.
Try their hand off on the doorknob.
Yeah.
Disappear and sort of must have worked.
Yep. So are you comfortable with it?
She looks. Well, there's no other choice, so.
Okay.
Nervous.
We're good.
You're good. Well, yeah. Everything will be fine.
Attention to you and make you sing a song or something to get you to relax.
Everything's good.
That would be nice.
Yeah. Baptism backfire. I've done that a few times in my life.
White says eight thirty.
All right.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning, everybody. See what crowd again. Okay, call the meeting to order. Any ambitions or directions to the agenda?
I'm assuming, Don, I'll make a motion to approve as printed then.
I'll second that.
Any discussion on favor? Both carried. Prove the minutes, March eleventh.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes. I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Both carried. General public concerns. Nobody yelling? Just Dean smiling.
Nobody's on the Zoom either today.
Okay. Kyle, EMA.
Kyle guy again.
Wow.
Discussion on supervisor's role as ESF fifteen public information officials.
Every year, we have to per the state's request, review emergency support functions. And this year, it has to do with, one of them has to do with public information officer. I don't know who it was back in two thousand and nineteen, but they created this document, which is a cut and paste from District One. Has nothing to do with Humboldt County. It was just insert Humboldt County name where applicable. So it has nothing to do with how we operate. We're gonna change that. We're gonna follow what this FEMA says. Okay, where I bring this to you folks is under the general operations, your folks' name is in there, as you can see in the highlighted piece on there, under normal, during normal operations. This doesn't even get opened up until there's a disaster. So, normal operations, one, that doesn't even need to be in there. Your names are in there, but we wanna get rid of that. Second part is during an incident, it's saying that you folks will have the ultimate authority for everything that goes out to the media. You folks can act on that how you want. Do you want that?
No. No.
You aren't doing, we aren't doing the dealing with what's going on. Most of the time, it would be you or him.
Mr. Kruger.
You guys will be hiding.
Well, yeah, we'd have to have a meeting before we could talk about it, and then they have to assign somebody to that. By that time.
It'd be hours.
Exactly, exactly. And I said, this is just a cut and paste from somebody else's program. I wanna word it differently, where it's, we are collaborating with you. We wanna make sure that you're aware of these things, but you don't have to do anything more than that. So, I couldn't, I couldn't just take that out of there within good conscience. I wanted to bring that to you. I don't know if you have to act on it or do whatever, but.
I would think that some type of chain of command, however.
I wonder how we approved the twenty nineteen one.
It actually gets.
First year on the board was just.
These get approved by the committee, the commission.
The commission.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, so he's on it, Dean's on it. Commission approves it, and there it goes.
Okay.
You will get a copy of it, but that's not it.
Okay, good.
But I want, I can't just take your folks' name out of there if you still wanna maintain that.
Well, I'll make a motion to take it out.
I'll make that motion to take our names out of everything. For communication.
Any other discussion? All favorite, aye?
Aye.
Carry.
All right, I will make those changes.
You can remove it according to this board.
Kyle, thank you very much. We appreciate you always looking out for, you do a great job, and I want you to know, we appreciate it.
So then when you get it all rewritten up, bring it up to us, just to accept it.
You can, you will get all of them. There's five of these that happen a year. So you will get those and it will go wherever you darn well wish it to be. Commission will get a copy of it as well, and I also need a copy, two and three copies in the EOC. So, that way, we're all on the same page. We know what the right hand's doing.
Exactly.
That's a great idea. Yes, thank you.
Thank you, and no, I haven't received anything from any school, city, state, county.
They can't just show them.
You gotta make fun too.
That.
You need to make fun too.
I do need to make one, just please. Excellent.
That's why the generator's sitting there from Homeland Security.
Oh, we have a new generator?
No, it's an old one.
We have a brand new one.
That's where it comes from. So.
Oh.
Okay, anything else, Kyle?
No.
Thank you. Ben, you're early.
Morning.
Morning, Ben.
So, one item on the agenda to approve an application to work in the county right of way for long lines. Probably two years ago, I think it was, long lines ran a fiber optic line up to the town of Livermore. I believe they turned at the Indian and went north to the county line. This particular application is to go from, I wanna say that's like Eighth Street, East to County K, and then north to where the tower is at, like just past Joe Collins's, where our road stops. There's an antenna out there. I'm not sure if it's Verizon's or whose it is, but they've requested access to that fiber optic line, so they are requesting a permit to put their forty-eight, forty-eight line fiber in ductwork, a minimum of thirty-six inches deep. They are not sure if they're gonna be on the north or south side. It depends on what locates return, but everything is in city limits of Livermore. I spoke to the city clerk at Livermore, and they had a city council meeting last Tuesday, and they agreed to approve it through us approving this permit.
So they'll take care of all the locates, and then they're responsible if they cut a.
They're responsible for any and all damages.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay, well, going thirty-six inches deep, they should fit in pipes.
Yeah.
Or anything.
Water should be.
Flyers and stuff, but it's not our problem.
Yes.
All right, we'll make a motion to plead the work permit for long lines.
My second.
Any other discussions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Both carries.
Where's long lines located? Is it just a, like a, just a corporate city? Get fired?
Yeah, I mean, I think they're a purchased company of a purchased company, and they changed their name.
I see.
Like Lumen is now, was Central Link, was Quest, was Ma Bell. Go far enough back.
Yeah.
All right. Beyond that, we will more than likely start homing a rock by the end of this week, beginning of next week, weather dependent. I think there's a chance of a few snowflakes this week, so we've kind of been holding off. But we got some moisture last week, so we went out on bladed roads, cut washboards, chung holes. We've been pulling in shoulders on our paved roads, trying to get rid of any edge drop off from the winter. And, yeah, I would think by next week, we'd start hauling rock.
To put on the gravel roads and.
Are you stockpiling it then, or you?
Everything's stockpiled. Yeah, everything that we stock.
Be a worry that we get a six, eight inch wet heavy snow that will be blading our new rock right into the ditch.
Yeah, that's.
It's a gamble.
It's a gamble. Um, I mean, at this point right now, we're not knowing. We're blading roads, but without moisture.
It's hard to do it much.
It's very hard to do. Everything that we can work on, we have been working on.
Cut all the trees you can find.
We spent three weeks cutting trees here. February was nicer than March, so we spent most of February outside actually cutting. I have to sit down with my three foremen and confirm that they wanna start hauling rock next week, but that was.
That's all I'm only concerned, because that's what we'll hear.
Yep.
Put that rock on, now you just come in plowed snow and through it all in the ditch.
So I would think if we did that, and shame on you for thinking we're gonna get six day.
I know, but it does happen.
But, well, I hope we don't put one plow down the middle of the road and not have a whole lot of double wide and.
If the weather was nicer and more fit, I'd say we'd go start resetting crosspipes and resetting tile, but that, what does it sixteen degrees tomorrow?
Yeah.
I think we'll probably avoid that.
Okay.
That's girls basketball. It's always, there's always a bell.
Yeah, we got through that without a blizzard.
Yeah, so we should be good.
No, it is a risk that you run.
I know.
Um.
And like Bruce says, if we do get that snow, just don't wing it back.
Our blade operators just need to know that.
Yeah.
They need to lift up. We have been in the process of removing our wings on our patrols, because even if we get the snow right now.
It'll be the blow.
The ditches are empty. I mean, we can take our time and still blade the material into the ditch without.
Yeah.
Without eating the wings, so. Okay.
Did you end up doing anything with your position? I done advertising, I guess.
Well, yes, we're done advertising. We interviewed last week, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday evening. Extended an offer to the gentleman, and she wanted the weekend to think about it, so.
Possibility been offered then?
It's been offered.
Possibility you might accept.
Yeah, yep. He is current military right now, so he would be transitioning away from military to.
Big decision.
Exactly, that's why.
Exercises in the morning and.
You know, that might not be a bad thing.
Little PT before we get in the truck.
Yeah.
I might swing through and join in then.
I need to, I need to. Yeah, but I should, I should know by the end of the day.
Good. Awesome.
All righty.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Ben. Okay, let's move on down to set proposed public hearing on twenty-four, twenty-five physical year for the budget for truth and taxation.
So, Trish proposed April eighth at eight thirty-five AM, and then the regular meeting would be at eight forty-five AM. They have to be two separate meetings.
Yeah, correct.
That works for everybody.
Yep. Well, I'll make that motion then to set the taxation. I'll get it, make sure I say it right. The truth in taxation statement for eight thirty-five AM. And then also set the board supervisors meeting at eight forty-five, and for the hearing and the budget, budgets. Should say.
Does your, your budget is for your five-year plan is on it, eight forty-five, right? So.
Yeah, if I'm a little earlier, a little later.
Doesn't matter.
Yeah.
Building on fire, right?
Yeah.
Well, if that's, and knowing that this has to be done that way, which is completely out in my field, I guess I'd second Sammy's motion.
Okay, good. Motion set the meeting date for the taxation on April eighth at eight thirty-five.
Which is the only thing we can do.
That's right.
That mean, we go in, do it, then go out.
And get out.
Yep, the public hearing.
And then the board of supervisors at eight forty-five that day.
Yep.
Good.
And Ben's on right after, so.
Yep.
Okay, any other discussion on that? All in favor?
Aye.
Both carried. Fifteen minutes to go before we go into the public hearing or closed session.
Maybe.
Maybe, yeah.
The only thing I had this last week was because of Dave Minnich from engineering about getting the wells capped and pulled out of the landfill, so.
Do you have a date when you want that done?
I need to work with you on your schedule, and he wants to be there, three of us have talked. He's got, I think Calhoun County went through it, so he's got pretty much a path to follow. And they had several people who quoted those prices, so we'll send a quest for bits up to them and go from there. That's about all I have.
I had nothing.
I had, let's see, what else did I have?
Didn't you make it down to the food pantry?
Oh, I got all the numbers for that, which she sent me. I'm glad you reminded me of that. It sounded like it was the biggest day they've ever had. They must have. All right. Mobile food pantry for March thirteenth, they had six, six thousand five hundred fifty-two pounds of food for enough for two hundred and twenty families. They ended up in Humboldt with a hundred and thirty-five and three hundred and eighty-five family members. Humboldt Homes, they did forty-seven and fifty-six, forty-seven different apartments, fifty-six family members. Livermore had twenty-nine families and fifty-six family members. They had thirty volunteers for a total of two hundred and eleven families, four hundred and ninety-seven family members. The next mobile food pantry is May eighth. She said they would, did you go?
No, I didn't.
They were done. The food was passed out, and, and they were out of there by five-thirty, so evidently it must have went very.
Real fast and whatever.
So, I wasn't back yet, so. No, so thank you for reminding me of that.
Okay. On the thirteenth, I headed down to Des Moines for the ISAC HR meeting, and I thought it was very beneficial. What'd you think?
It was, it was very interesting.
It was, I mean, it was a lot of, of course, government HR is totally different from private sector and everything, so it's, it's good to hear the differences and everything. I think it, it was good that Shauna was there and to be able to hear everything, so I'm glad you were able to make it. And then I was there through Friday. Thursday morning was the county structure meeting, and I attended some of that, and I also attended some of the Health and Human Services meeting with Kelly Garcia. Which makes me mad, so she pretty much is not going to listen to anybody. It's gonna be their way, pretty much that all the board supervisors are gonna be out of the loop. We're not gonna have any local control. And all I can say is we gotta get the word out to our constituents, because until people start listening and really taking an interest in what's going on down at our state government, down at the legislatures, they're just gonna keep ramming things down our throat. And House File seven eighteen is a perfect example. You talk to any one of the board supervisors, and none of them agree with anything in that seven eighteen file that's actually gonna hurt your counties, whether you're, especially the rural counties. And it just makes me so mad that the rural legislators will not take the time to listen to their constituents and see how much this is gonna hurt. And so, I know I keep saying I'm not gonna harp on it anymore, but it's just so disappointing, and and that, so that's, that's pretty much how it is, and they don't care. They're just gonna ram anything through, how the governor wants it, and they're all afraid to do anything different. And I know as a Republican, I probably shouldn't even be saying this, but it's getting ridiculous, and it's getting out of hand, the trifecta effect. And we all gotta start standing up for what's right. And not worry about getting reelected, because sometimes you gotta do what's right and not worry about not getting reelected. You gotta do what's right for your people. And now I lost my place again. I don't think so, are you guys?
We have only a time.
We got, we got ten minutes for you.
Playing the Jeopardy theme song, waiting for your answer.
Okay, oh, I had it right there.
I wasn't gonna say anything, but you had all the notes in the front.
Oh, my God, um, there's a lot of, there's evidently a bill going into, it's House File two, five, seven, four, for secondary roads, dollar distribution. Do you know anything about that, Ben? There's a new formula they're trying to get through.
So, twenty-five seventy-four is the one that Bruce actually sat through, which is the, we call it SERP Act, secondary road fund
Yeah.
distribution. They want to change the way that it's handled and change the, the way that it's distributed. Right now, it's, the SERP Act is formulated with county engineers, board supervisor members throughout the entire state. And I think they wanna basically get rid of SERP Act and include it with a different subcommittee.
Right.
Where legis, where voted on legislators can control.
Mm-hmm. Yeah. And there's two files.
Kind of like something else.
Right, yeah.
Yeah.
There's the House File, which is the twenty-five seventy-four, and then there's this Senate File twenty-three eighty-five. And everybody had huge concerns on the Senate File. It's, it's totally different, I guess, from the House. And.
Well, they only do the traffic counts in one corner or a quarter of the.
We get it every four years.
Every four years, it's our area.
Gravels are probably closer to every twelve or sixteen. And that's where they, they lay the little.
Rubber shake.
Rubber across the road.
Gotcha, okay.
Then that, that is used as a, the way they compute how the numbers are, the traffic, and, and then they distribute funds according to.
So for us, our, our HBP money, when I talk about like highway bridge program money, our federal money can only be used on bridges that have at least twenty-five vehicles per day or traffic count. That's particularly lingering on roads where we've got dilapidated bridges on gravels, and you might see that traffic counter out there once every sixteen or twenty years. For instance, Southern sixty-nine on Iowa Avenue, we've got a bridge. Sufficiency rating is around fifty right now. It's scheduled for next year. We're trying to use HBP money, but the last time we had a traffic count done, that was higher than twenty-five, it was like nineteen ninety-nine. So.
So we need to know where these traffic counters are and whether they're in just.
Yeah, essentially, we have funding that's tied to the, the traffic counts. If you look at the formula that Bruce goes and checks out, I wanna say Humboldt's in the bottom ten.
I'm sure.
Counties as far as what our percentage of the SERP Act is.
Right, so that was something that was brought up, the rural counties are really hurt. I mean, they're really.
And it's gonna continue.
Yeah.
And they're, they're.
We're the ones that are getting squeezed the most.
Right.
Because our counts, but if they count like the old Claire Blacktop, where all the truck traffic's sneaking across to go to, to the ethanol plants down there, they'd throw their numbers way out of whack, and they wouldn't wanna know those numbers, because then they'd say, holy cow, you guys got a lot of traffic through there.
Yeah, it should be a poor land.
Everything that's coming from up north is coming down through Gilmore and cutting across through that area, our, our numbers would be huge.
Right.
But they're interested in that.
No, of course not. The other thing that was talked about a lot was the EMS program, you know, getting your, an EMS levy. And what the pro, by the process of, I know Renwick would like to be able to levy that, and then I think Gilmore City also, because they have the two, don't they? Have the two. I don't think there's anybody else, just Renwick, and I've gotten a call from somebody from Renwick before, so they talked about that quite a bit. How to get, how to get knowing, how to get people to understand your dollar amounts, and, and really this Mark McCullough, he is really, he's assistant chief for West Des Moines, but he said he'd be willing to help anybody, and there's several other ones, the one from Polkahannis, they got it through. He said he'd be willing to help any counties, and then also the Sioux, they have it also, but it, I mean, that might be something that we need to start looking into, but it's like a six-month process, so if we wanna get it on the November ballot, we really need to start looking at the process now, because you have to have three hearings, readings. You can't pat, you can't waive any of them. You have to have each reading. So, I think we just maybe need to get those.
Towns, those towns.
Yeah, those two towns together, really, and just see what, you know, along with the hospital, and just, because I know the hospital can levy, because they have their own little levy, so they, they already do levy for it, but it's the other two outside ones, and those are very important, because they do reach a lot of the area of the, of the counties, so I think we need to maybe get a committee going or something, and, you know, bring them together. And then during legislative hot topics, windmills came up again, and there was a lot of discussion, both for and against. I mean, and what's, what I thought was very interesting, that that was talked about so much, because it hadn't been talked about at the
For quite a while.
For a long time, so they're starting to go again, but I got, I got a phone call Friday when I come home from ISAC, from a gentleman that west of town, and he's very interested. He hasn't signed yet, but he's looking into it, and he didn't understand the moratorium, and he didn't know there. He didn't understand the moratorium and he didn't know there were, they read the paper, and I know it. And then I also had somebody from church ask me about it, that they have already signed up for it. And that they're actually getting lease money right now. Um, and she didn't know there was a moratorium and, and didn't understand why we were doing that, and I, after I explained why that we need to get. Everything figured out with these larger windmills, you need to have farther apart setbacks, you know, and things like that. I said, you know, there's no. It's just for a year, the moratorium's for a year until we get it figured out and what with the, um. Um, every, you know, everything, so she felt better about that. Um, but it sounds like there's going to be more and more people in Humboldt County that are interested in having windmills. My thought was very interesting, we talked about it so much down there, and then I get two inquiries when, when I get home.
Well, they've been having meetings.
Yep.
For and against them up in the boat area.
Right.
And um, I got a phone call from someone.
Google, yeah, I did.
And that lady from the company, she called me, wanted to talk to me, but that, I didn't have a voice, so I said, you have to call me later.
Yeah.
They send emails, I think, to everyone.
Yep.
But by the same token, you know, it's the same way for the state. If they, once they repower those things, if they um, renegotiate.
Right.
And he gave you more money for your damages that are happening to the roads and whatnot, then it would be. A more enticing deal, but they don't, when they repower them and they're getting more electricity off them, they don't renew that.
You don't get any more.
It's just left alone.
And the gal from, the um, board supervisor from Adair County says, um, it's been a good, there's pros and cons with them. They have quite a few down at Adair County. She says, we have the best roads and the best bridges, um, probably in the state of Iowa. Because they get a lot of money from the windmills to fix up their roads and, and bridges. And um, but she said, there's also the cons of, you know, so many, once they, they come to an area and then it gets, you know. But they can only have so many too, and, and she did bring that up, that it was very frustrating that she can't, they can't tax more. They come in and they refurbish everything, you only get one evaluation. That's the evaluation at the time they were installed. So say, ten years later, they refurbish them with bigger engines or motors or whatever they call those things in the blades. Sure, yeah, yeah, then um, the, the county doesn't get any more money. When I explained that to the gal at church, she goes, I didn't realize that. I'm like, no. So I said, there's pros and cons both ways, I mean.
That'd be like telling Linda, just because I added on fifty percent to my house, I wanna stay at my same valuation.
Exactly, exactly.
I don't think I would go over well.
Yeah, so I mean, that's kind of the, I mean, and that was discussed a lot. Down at ISAC. As a matter of fact, they finally had to say, okay, let's go to a different subject.
Yeah.
Um, so that's kind of the, all the, um. Things that we were, that I thought were of importance for us, you know, up here for ISAC.
They also have a lot of windmills up there in the Sioux County.
They do.
When I came back on the Boji last night.
Oh, jeez.
Forgot all these blinky red lights and stuff.
Yeah, you, you go, you go east at Redger up there and do those windmills for sixty miles.
Right.
You got it.
It's crazy how much, how many they put up there.
Yeah. And that was, and that was brought up, you know. Um, we need clean energy, we realize that, you know, global warming and everything, but we also need land because. There's, the population is getting larger and larger and larger, so we need good farmland to produce that food, so it's, it's a kind of a.
Whatever the county was that, they put their windmills in, then they put them in the wrong location. Wasn't that what Linda told us? Put them in the wrong location, they were, take, take them down, move them over five feet.
Oh, they did put them in the wrong location.
They weren't.
They're gonna put bigger ones up.
Oh, so that was. Word, word, Word County.
Oh, yeah.
Bigger ones.
The tax abatement had run out. So to avoid having to pay taxes later, they decommissioned and tore down the ones that they had. Or they're proposed to tear down the ones that they had and put new ones up five feet over, so the tax abatement.
So it's back to zero.
Mm-hmm.
Then they cut the base off, tie it down so they could farm that ground again, and it's like, what?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, just move it five feet and they go back to zero.
They said in your ordinance, you've gotta make sure that you've got that part tight, so that if they do that.
Do that.
I know, I know, that, but that, oh, yeah, that was, that was.
Green energy.
Yeah, so that was brought up, that, you know, you gotta have your ordinance very tight, because they have, they know every loophole. That there is. So, all right, I'm not gonna talk anymore, we're up to London.
Okay, all I have was Ann on shoulder, she's got it down. Uh, need a motion to go on the closed session.
I'm making a motion to go into closed section as per code, uh, twenty one point five. Let's read it.
Yeah.
To discuss strategy, counsel matters that are presently in litigation. Or disclosure. Possible action.
Showing in there.
Take a second. I just talked.
Yeah, so Sandy, don't forget to stop down after you're done.
I know it, geez, I couldn't believe that, and I was thinking gonna do it Saturday and just.
Did you forget?
I did.
Should be a one for her, Russ.
Well, you know, I dressed up today cuz I thought I might get a mug shot, so I thought.